All right, good evening. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Welcome to Sanford Planning Board Meeting of August 8, 2025. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you are unable to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the chair will ask proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, then those who are neither for nor against, but who may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any questions must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, I don't think that will happen tonight. The chair at sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at sole discretion will limit repetitive comments, although it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, chair will ask if any new comments. Then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impacts of a project in light of Sanford subdivision site plan, shoreline, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulation. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings as fact. Since the findings may substantially affect your appeals rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinances and conferences of plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the planning and development department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember that this is a public hearing. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Moving on to minutes, we have draft minutes from 2021, 25. Let me just pull up who was here for that. I think we just had that conversation, but... All right, there we go. So...
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero with two abstentions. Okay, moving on to... So old business filed 2025, Tac 09, Tac J30, Tac 47, Tac PS, Sanford Housing Authority, Heritage Crossing will remain on the table per the applicant's request. Next item is new business filed number 2025, Tac 30, Tac R3, Tac 48B, Tac PW, Littlefield Road and Plant Way. In light of having nobody else, Jamie, will you set us up with this?
Yes, good evening. The applicant is not able to attend today. But I can give you access to what we're here for today. So this is a private way request off of Littlefield Road in Springville called Plant Lane.
Sorry. Plant Lane is essentially a driveway that was installed for the Plant family decades ago. Over the years, they did some property transfers, some lot splits, and it effectively required it to become a private way. So Billy Plant Jr. is coming before us with the request to turn what at one point was a driveway that over the years has evolved into a private way to officially get city approval to call it a private way, therefore create an illegal frontage for another possible lot split in the future. So essentially, they had a private engineer come out and do some test borons on the Plant Lane, determined that it met our ordinance requirements for a private way. So essentially, today's request is to not to perform any additional work. It is to simply memorialize Plant Lane that's existed for years as a formal private way, create an legal frontage for not only existing lots, but for a potential future lot split. So on the private way plan that was in your packet, that went before Site Plan Review Committee. Coming out of Site Plan Review Committee, it had three conditions. It had a condition that they label it a plan, a private way. That's an ordinance requirement. The plan was labeled... Plan showing confirmation of existing private way for William Plant. So one condition was they label it per ordinance requirements. The next condition said that they provide lot frontage for map R348B, I'm sorry, 43A, 48A. So in the Plant Lane meets and bounds, they stopped short of the lot line for 43A. Wherein the deed for that parcel, I won't get into too much details, but they had frontage on the right-of-way prior, and that frontage was taken away in the original proposal for Plant Lane. So there was a condition that they modify the lot lines to give back the frontage that 43A had previously.
Yeah, 48A.
Sorry, 48, yes. And then a third one condition is add a density calculation block to the private way plan showing the density calculations for all parcels created from the parent parcel, from the original parcel. So they're not effectively asking for a lot split or anything today, but in our net density calculation definition, the private way square footage cannot count towards the net residential density calculation for the existing houses or any proposed future houses. So we just needed them to verify that removing the square footage to make Plant Lane official doesn't throw off the net residential density calculations. Me and Alex both used the numbers provided on their plan. We don't think there's an issue. We just need the plan to show that there's not an issue. I talked with Joe Stanley, Line Pro Survey in Springville this afternoon about the conditions. Unfortunately, he did not have time to amend the plan for tonight's meeting. He did send me a revised plan today that does show a potential lot split between R348A, which is no longer owned by a family member of the Plants, and R348B. Land swap, sorry. I said lot split. Land swap. So Ben, can you pull up my computer screen, please? So on the plan provided to us today, this portion of land right here is proposed to go to 48A, and this portion of land right here is proposed to go to 48B. What this does here is it gives this amount of street frontage on Plant Lane. So this is what Bill Plant Jr. is proposing to do to solve Condition B. So on my draft motion for tonight, if we feel fit moving forward, I change Condition B to provide executed deed/deeds for the land swap between map R348A and R348B resulting in street frontage for lot R348A. So I switched the condition a little bit. So they're now showing a proposed land swap that does appear to provide the frontage, but it's not legal until the deeds are executed. So I changed the condition to show us the executed deeds once that happens. So to summarize, again, there is no actual work proposed. We're trying to formalize work that was done years ago as a driveway into their family compound. As you can see on the plan that's up now, potentially in the future, they are looking at providing another lot off here on the front. Again, this is not a subdivision request. That lot division is not actually part of this approval, but just noting that what facilitated Plant Lane needing to become legal was a potential lot split in the future. That is essentially why we're here tonight. Matt Preventure reviewed the private way plan, concurs with the private engineer that it appears as though what was a driveway was built to our standard for a private way and doesn't feel any additional work is necessary to meet ordinance requirements.
Okay, thank you. I will, before we take it on, I will open it up to public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this? Go ahead. Is there anyone who would like to speak as a proponent? Is there anyone who would like to ask a question or make a comment? Okay, now declare the public hearing closed and take it up for planning board discussion. Before I have one thing, but before I bring it up, anybody have anything? Just to clarify the land swap, we're not approving the land swap. This was just being added as a note effectively to help support the future development if it happens.
So the land swap is to provide the frontage to lot 48A that was removed by the meets and bounds of the proposed private way. So in order for them to create this private way as designed, at least the portion that is shown right here has to happen to give the frontage back to that lot. So in theory, we are saying that at least this portion has to happen. We don't care if this goes to Bill Plant. He is saying that that's part of the deal. He's working with that landowner to swap it instead of anything else. So, so yes, part of this approval is that they have to provide us with a deed that shows that 48A has frontage on the meets and bounds for Plant Lane, which is, and then the condition is why I said provide executed deed or deeds, because it might only be one.
Yeah.
It might be two.
So without, without a swap, this is a non-conforming private way?
Without, without providing frontage to that lot, we could not approve this private way.
Right. Okay. Okay, so that makes it the condition. Okay, understand. Anybody else? All right, we have a motion? Oh, no, we have findings as fact.
280-16-7A utilization of the site is recommended that it is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven-zero.
280-16-7Q technical and financial capacity is recommended that it is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Group one, 280-16-7B access to the site, 7C access into the site, 7D internal vehicular circulation, and 7E pedestrian circulation is recommended that it is met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Jamie, you missed 280-16...
I skipped it on purpose. That shouldn't be there.
Oh.
It's somewhere else.
Okay.
Yeah. I forgot to cut it once I put it where it was supposed to be. 280-16-7F storm water management, 7G erosion control, 7K natural features, 7L groundwater protection, 20T.1, no more than one dwelling unit and related accessory building on end uses, T.2 maintenance agreement, and T.3 minimum standards are recommended that it is met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven-zero.
And Jack, just for clarification, that, that T.3 is the same one that used to be numbered wrong up top as 20.3. Group number three, 280-16-7H water supply, 7L sewer disposal, 7, no, I guess that's an I, 7I sewer disposal, 7J utilities, 7M exterior lighting, 7N solid waste disposal, 7O landscaping, 7P shoreline relationship, 7R buffering, and 7S airport encroachment is recommended that is not applicable because the applicant is not proposing any development. This standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Seven-zero. Now, now a draft motion.
The planning board accepts the information in the July 1, 2025 summer report and August 6, 2025 Site Plan Review Committee recommendation to the planning board. Grant the requested waivers and find that the proposed minor site plan and private way filed 2025-30-R3-48B/PW to construct a private way has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the Zone and Ordinance subject to the following conditions. One, by September 6, 2025, unless other arrangements are made with the planning department, provide five copies of revised plans that adequately respond to issues raised in review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, amend plan to be labeled a plan of a private way. B, provide executed deed or deeds for the land swap between map R348A and R348B resulting in street frontage for lot R348A. And then C, add a density calculation block to the private way plan showing the density calculations for all parcels created from the parent parcel. And then two, standard conditions of approval. Number three, AutoCAD submission. Number four, signed recorded plat. And number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Okay, moving on to planning director's report.
We have got decent influx of applications coming into the planning department in the last couple of weeks. Right now, we're scheduling two a meeting for the next four meetings. Due to some of the applications needing more information, we were able to spread them out a little bit. So I, I think we're gonna, we gave you a few meetings off early summer. We're gonna pay you back for end of summer. So I hope you all enjoyed your couple of Wednesdays off. I want to ask no more thank both the planning board and the staff. We are down a member at this point, so the remaining staff is picking up the extra burden, and they're doing it with smiles on their face. So I appreciate all the extra effort that everybody puts in. I feel we're continuing down the right path and look forward to the future.
All right, thank you. Anything else from the board? Any communications of the board?
I want to share a comment. Is there some way we can require the applicant to be present for an application? I'd like to, I look at, this is by, this is the way I look at it. You know, I volunteer my time to look at the material, and then I volunteer to show up at the meeting, and we're making decisions that are legally binding on somebody. You know, I think the least they could do is show up, or send a representative, just to be, just to be present at the meeting.
I would agree.
Or be on Zoom if, if need be.
It is always better if they're present. We could have chose to table it until they could have been present. There's nothing in ordinance that says you have to be here. I mean, I think it's safe to assume that everybody realizes they should be here. The applicant was planning on being here tonight. Something came up mid-afternoon where they couldn't come tonight. I told them that I would let you guys know that if you guys felt comfortable hearing it without them here, we would, and if not, it would be tabled till they could be present. So I think tonight was...
This wasn't a significant issue, but I mean, it could be in the future.
I mean, tonight was essentially an exercise of paperwork. They're, they're not constructing. There, there was no storm water. There rarely was nothing that could have potentially come up tonight that wasn't already in the conditions that we're gonna stay no matter what. I would 100% agree that if it was a project that they're building a new 12-unit apartment building, and there's still questions or concerns that I can't answer, yes, the applicant absolutely has to be here to answer those questions. We can't, you guys can't make a decision if there's unanswered questions. Next, next time we revise the bylaws, we can definitely make it an actual rule that if you guys so choose, that the applicant be present. Without it being an absolutely steadfast requirement, I can't physically say they have to be here. I can say that if there's any questions, it will be tabled because I think that is legitimately what would happen. But again, it is definitely up to you guys. If you want to make it so every time, they are absolutely here. I don't think that's too far-fetched, and we could add it to the bylaws if you guys so chose.
Worth of discussion anyways. I mean, from a respect standpoint, you are right, we are here. But on the flip side, we have to be ready to hear the, hear it. If we aren't happy with it, we aren't satisfied with what we're hearing, we just be ready to table it. I don't think, sometimes we'll sit here and hash things out for a long time when maybe we should table things, but we kind of, we get through them. We, very rarely do we actually table an item. But in this situation, if this had a bunch of issues that we couldn't answer and, and staff shouldn't answer on behalf of the applicant, then, then I think tabling would be the thing to do. That would end up being a forcing function in itself, right? You start tabling projects because people bring them and they don't show up. I mean, all the time, I've been here, this is my eighth year, I think this is only the second time I've had an applicant not show up. So it, it isn't happening all the time. I mean, it's, there's definitely a respect thing, but I think that as long as we're ready to, to be able to table something because we're not satisfied with what's being said, or not being said because they're not here, that, that's my, my position on it anyways. Anything else? Anything else, anybody else?
I just want to say that I agree with what you had just said. I mean, yeah, respect to be here was important, but the fact that we had the option to table it at the beginning, or that we could have tabled it during the conversation is reasonable and is leaving, we're gonna be here no matter what, the people do, applicant.
It's a legally binding decision. They should at least have sign for it.
That's, that's their risk, and that's their risk. They could be here without being able to comment, and they blow it because they're not here.
Because the alternate could be, we could hear what we want to hear, and we could make a decision that is legally binding the other direction, right? If they weren't here to speak their piece, then it could go the other direction as well, right? So that's where the risk is for them.
And I truly feel that in most cases, if they're not here, it would end up being tabled. Almost every time, you guys have questions for the applicant.
Right.
And I, I only have the comfort level and the legal authority to answer so many questions. So I would say most of the time, if they're not present, it will end up having to be tabled because there's questions unanswered. Or you guys might make a decision not in their favor because they weren't able to clarify a detail. So it, it's at their own risk, but again, I think most of the time, it will result in a tabling because unanswered questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
Since we're asking questions in general, we have this moment, when in, oftentimes, no, every time we approve the, these ordinance, any findings, you, you state that the applicant has demonstrated a financial and also a technical capacity. Now, I understand the technical side where they're providing plans and they have engineers, but I never see in the documents some financial commitment. I always feel uncomfortable when I, I agree that I'm saying that they have demonstrated a financial where I, I never see it in any documents. So if you bifurcate, if you split that, say demonstrated technical, I get it. The financial, I'm agreeing to something that I don't know about.
So the financial comes down to the performance guarantee question that we always bring up to you guys, and there's a number discussed. So the, the financial capacity comes down to the performance guarantee. That's exactly why we have the performance guarantee number here, and why the performance guarantee number becomes a condition of approval. So the, the number for the performance guarantee is the true cost of all site improvements. The, the capacity that they do it is the fact that they have to post that, that performance guarantee either in cash, letter of credit, or bond, which proves they have that capacity. So you guys are approving the number with the performance guarantee number that's discussed, and then the proof of it is that they give us that, that bond in the end.
That's fair. When I read this packet, and I may have missed it, I might have missed it, if you can chill, but I didn't see a number in this particular packet.
So in this particular package, there is no number because there's no site work being proposed.
Exactly. So when you say, "I'm approving them for a financial capacity," and there's no number, why am I approving it? If it read, "They will provide a financial," because I could approve that.
Right.
That's the only, that's the one word.
Doesn't Matt come up with that number?
So Matt works with the applicant. So the applicant provides engineering department with an estimated cost of construction. Matt then fields that estimate to verify it's accurate, goes back and forth with the applicant to say, "Okay, you're doing a million-dollar project that you say there's $10,000 worth of site work. Show me the estimates." They then give us the estimates, and instead of, they, they forgot two zeros on the 10. So then the performance guarantee ends up being a million dollars instead of 10,000.
So verifying their technical, their financial capacity is an ordinance requirement. In this case, the financial capacity would be to zero because there is no performance guarantee. So this is unique, right? Because it's really an after the fact. Maybe, I mean, and hopefully we won't see any more of these, but maybe this would be, there is no performance guarantee would be the statement necessary to satisfy the financial capacity vote, right?
On some of the projects that have more intensive site work, there have been letters in the packet from a bank saying that they have the financial means to do this within the, their deposits. So we, we have gotten some on the projects that are very site-intensive to say that they have the means to do it before we approve it. But on, on this one, there's a zero dollar tied to the project, so every one of us can prove we have zero dollars in the bank. There, there is no proof to that.
But I guess to Todd's point is, nothing in the paperwork says that, if someone was someone to look over it, there is no performance guarantee talked about.
Isn't that a standard condition, though?
It is. That's, that's why it's a condition.
Yeah.
So I do understand, I now understand. So you're saying, even with the performance guarantee, they don't have that yet, so how are we saying they meet it because it's not here yet?
Correct.
So technically, before they have official approval, so the approval we just did tonight is not worth the paper it's printed on until one of them being, they give us that, that letter of credit or bond. So by the time they actually get the thing from the planning office saying, "Okay, you're okay to proceed," we have it in hand.
So effectively, what we do tonight, take this aside because it's already done... So, effectively, what we do tonight, take this aside because it's already done, this would then go, they'd have to bring everything in all their paperwork, prove their, everything that this says in the plans, all the changes. Then they can issue a permit, then they can start construction. So, they've proven it by saying they have, that the bank is willing to back them up, or they have the bank, they have enough money in the bank to pay for it. They're gonna verify it. So, I guess the sticking point here is the guarantee was zero. So, we voted that they had the technical, the financial capacity to pay zero, which, but we don't say it. Like, we don't say it's zero. We just, it's silent. I think that's part of the sticking point.
No, on your point, in the future, if it would make the Board feel better. So, technical and financial capacity is one line item. I could say in it that they have proven technical capacity, but due to there being no financial cost to this project, that portion is NA. So, right now, I only do it as it's one, it's one standard of approval, so I do it as one line. But if we ever get another one that's zero, then I could split it and give it two lines saying technical capacity is met, financial capacity is not applicable.
Okay. Fair. Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the Board? Any else from staff? All right, Jack?
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Seven-zero.